I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you. We, our flag is right here tonight, and due to whether our students are not here, I'd like to rise to play a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you remain standing, and during this time of private thought, I'd like for us to focus tonight on the passing of our commissioner, Mike Fryer, and to say that Michael is a dedicated person and committed to his work done on the commission. The thing that I remember most about Mike is when he made up his mind, his mind was made up, and he, he didn't mind telling you how he got to that decision, but he wasn't going to move away from it. So as you do that, as you have your moment of silence, would you focus, please, on Mike Fryer? You may be seated. I would ask for the approval of the agenda with the modifications that we made, we discussed earlier in the evening. Could I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair, I'm sorry, could you just walk us through the agenda so the folks in the room will know what we're doing?
I'll call it out one at a time. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the curriculum feature. Ms. Swanger, are you curriculum tonight?
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, tonight I would like to introduce you to Norma Brown. She is a family education resource specialist with us, and she has a wonderful skill that allows her to connect with students, with staff, with families, and with the community. And she's going to talk about a wonderful program that she is a part of and has great success with, and we have students here and staff, so welcome, Norma Brown.
Well, my usual joke, somebody knows it already, in five minutes, my accent is the same, but you think it's a little less worse. The same. No, really. This is going to be a joint effort between La Señora Ana de la Garza, she will be interpreting in Spanish for some wonderful students that, yet, they are not fluent in English, they will certainly be speaking better than me in three years or when they graduate, and some of our parents that join us tonight. So if you are bilingual, you get a chance to hear twice, and if not, I hope the things flow in a way that nothing gets missed in translation. I want to thank to all the members of the Board of Education, Dr. Baldwin, seniors, administrators, staff, everybody that make possibly this opportunity to talk about this program that is called Manos. Manos started in 2009 as a collaboration of Children First Communities in Schools and Warren Wilson College. At that time, I was the Latino outreach family coordinator for them, and when I came to work with Boncon County Schools, everybody trusted me enough to let me come with my baby and bring it to Boncon County Schools. The first group were ten students from four different high schools and some from middle school. This week, the last count of our enrollment for this semester is forty-five students. And they are all students from Erwin High. Which is a little painful for me because I cannot have more middle schoolers or students from another schools that they want to come. But that reality and that choice is showing something that is undeniable, that youth still arriving to our country, and the students want to gain opportunities, access to education, and hopefully, in the future, we can replicate the program in other districts. Often I get asked how a program that doesn't have a formal budget and funding can grow and be successful for ten years, outreach in the Latino community. And I always respond that there are three magic Cs. Some people think that I have a magic wand, and I don't, or that things work because I'm such a nice person. I am not really as nice as everybody thinks. Really, the program works because it has three pillars, and they are collaboration, communication, and compassion. I want to say to you that the success of this program comes not because it has a magical sword, nor because people who I am very happy with create it. This is due to three things in particular: communication, compassion, and collaboration. Thank you. And collaboration is not just we understand collaborating with two, three organizations, it's a multi-layered collaboration inside Boncon County School systems and outside Boncon County School systems. And that collaboration will not be successful without the component of the communication. And this is also not one level of communications, also there are different levels. That goes beyond the language barrier. We also, I also talk often in the trainings and the workshops that we are talking about deep, honest communication. And also, I talk a lot about the encounters and the workshops, that is a very profound communication. But it's not only about understanding the complexity of challenges, gifts, and talents the Latino community or other immigrants' community brings to our county. But it's not only the complexity and the challenges that the Latino community or others that come from other countries. It's also us as immigrants, understanding the realities, the talents, the gifts, and the challenges of the community that is receiving and embracing us. It's also the challenges that the immigrants have to come here and understand what this community has to offer. And compassion is a compassion completely away, far away from any kind of privilege. And compassion is very important, that goes beyond any of the privileges that anyone can have. And it's also based in profound understanding and knowing each other. And it's also in a profound understanding and comprehension of others. Now, when Manos happens, Manos happens every Tuesday. When does Manos happen? It happens every Monday. And when I walk you through very quickly through a Manos Day, you will see the level of collaboration that it takes just to put together Manos one day. And so, when we review this, we will see the level of collaboration that is needed and coordination to accomplish it every day. It starts with the students going to Miss Myers' room, our wonderful ESL teacher. It begins when the students go with the Ms. Myers, the English student who is second language. And they stay there from 3:00 to 4:30. And how do students choose to Manos or they get recommended to Manos is another way to show the collaboration. And how the students are selected or recommended to Manos is part of the collaboration. Is the communication with parents where we also need the help of language services. And the communication with the parents is carried out by the help of the language services. Our very close communications and relationship with Miss Myers. And our very close communication and coordination with Ms. Myers. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the counselors and all the team from Student Services. With the students and their parents who are not able to get their kids there. And also, with the wonderful collaboration of the director, because if there is no one who is with them, they immediately take the bus to get them. They get to United Methodist Church in Emma, that provides us that space for seven years. I don't know how we had managed to just broke a fan and a table, but in seven years is the only thing we actually broke. During seven years, it's been a wonderful collaboration with the Methodist Church of Emma, in which we've only broken a stool and a table in these seven years, only that. Yeah. And I have to be immensely grateful for their generosity and willingness to have us there. And I am infinitely grateful for their generosity and willingness to have us there. From 4:45 until 6:00. From 4:45 until 6:00. Those are the longest minutes of my whole week. Those are the longest minutes of the whole week. Because those, that is called the social hour. Because we're in the social hour. So usually, they take the bus, twenty-eight students. Usually, twenty-eight students take the bus. So they are allowed to be in one room with their phones, in another room playing music, in another room chatting, and I have to be working and supervising everybody. And they allow them to be in a room, in a meeting, talking, studying, and I have to be going from one place to another, supervising them. Or playing soccer outside when the weather permits. Or playing soccer outside when the weather permits. Anybody that wants to volunteer, please see me. Anybody who wants to volunteer, please see me. For me. Food connection provides us with a full meal twice a month, because, again, at 5:30, they are very hungry. And there is a complete connection, because at 5:00, everyone is very hungry. So thank you to them. The other two meetings, the two Tuesdays, is a struggle, so they are flyers there for anybody that wants to help with their meals for the next two Tuesdays. And always, this is a challenge, so therefore, we have propaganda, anybody who wants to help with the food for the next two Tuesdays. And always, this is a challenge, so therefore, we have propaganda, anybody who wants to help with the food for the next two Tuesdays. At 6:00, Warren Wilson College students arrived, and I always laugh at that moment, because I get to share the responsibility. At 6:00, the students of the University of Wilson arrive, and it's the moment when I smile, because for the first time, I'm going to share the responsibility of the supervision. And they provide help with homeworks, activities, and the students that have the possibility to arrive by themselves, they get at 6:00, and there usually there are fifteen, eighteen students more. What happens in that moment is that they start helping the students with their tasks, but some students arrive by themselves, and that makes the group increase to maybe another eighteen students. And that's, that's the creativity in responding to the needs of the community. There are students that need the school bus, there are students that their parents can bring them to Manos at 6:00 o'clock, and they stay there until 8:00. And that's the beauty of the community, in which some students go by the bus, others are brought by their parents, and all of them arrive there. Those two hours of academic support, civic engagement, leadership skills, and life skills. They stay there until 8:00, and it's the moment when they are developing their academic abilities, their leadership, and all the other opportunities that they can take. They will not be possible without Warren Wilson College mentors, Bonner scholars. Everything is not possible without all the tutors of Warren Wilson and the people who support us. UNCA, the program Vamos. The Carolina College of Carolina in Asheville, and the program of Vamos. Another organizations like Helmet, Our Voice, Peaceful Legal Services. Other organizations like Our Voice, Helmet, and Peaceful Legal Services. From women to women. From women to women. And the most important of this journey are the parents. The most important of this journey are the parents. We couldn't have this program without the trust. We couldn't have this program without the trust. And dedication of parents that after working ten, twelve hours or two jobs, like many other parents, not just Latino parents. These parents, who after having worked ten or twelve hours, one, two, or more jobs, who are tired, still come. They come to pick up their children at 8:00 o'clock. They come to pick up their children at 8:00 o'clock. Sometimes not that o'clock, but that's okay. Sometimes not that o'clock, but that's okay. Sometimes not that o'clock, but that's okay. Last semester, we had forty students. Last semester, we had forty students. Thirty-four of them, they passed all their four subjects. Thirty-four of them passed all their four subjects. And the rest, they failed on one. And the rest, they failed on one. So the academic component is served, and the other parts of Manos wants to achieve, if you allow me, I would love that two students and one parent just have a few words sharing their experience, and, like I said, we would love more volunteers, brave persons, and thank you, thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity, and I will invite Ms. Gloria, do you want, please? Can you read her testimony? And now, I want to tell you that this goal, with all the reporting that I've given, has been achieved, but this could be achieved more easily if we had more volunteers, so please, consider volunteering. Now, Ms. Gloria is going to come and express some things.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Gloria. I'm the mother of Clemente. My son is not here right now. I'm happy and grateful that my son was in Manos program since he was in eighth grade, and now he is ready to graduate. I assure you that he was obliged for the first time, because I was pushing him to go, he was telling me that if the coordinator was an older woman, it was going to be so boring to be there. With one visit, he fell in love with the program, and he stopped judging people just because of their age. Manos. That was me. Manos was where my son learned to control his rebellion, to be able to relate and respect and live, and I, ah, excuse me, I went, I went. Manos was where my son learned to control his rebellion, to be able to relate and respect and live, and I, ah, excuse me, I went. He not only helped with his tasks, but he learned from his emotions and from other cultures. Manos was a program where my son learned how to manage his rebellions, he learned how to relate with other people, he learned respect, and he learned to communicate with others. To be able to relate and respect with other people. I went to the meetings, Ms. Norma always looks the way to communicate with parents, the ways to help us. And our case is complicated, because we were already separated, it's not surprising that the group has grown so much, the work they do is wonderful, I ask families, organizations, and everyone, please support this program, because it's a life-changing program. My son learned about values, humility, and service. I love my son, but I love more the man that he is right now, and Manos is the reason of that. Thank you so much. Everyone, I'm Ms. Norma. I'm going to invite Jaime Valerio to share his testimony. Now, I'm going to invite Jaime Valerio to share his testimony. Hello, everyone, thanks for being here. Hello, everyone, thanks for being here. My little speech is in Spanish, I hope it doesn't inconvenience anyone. My speech is going to be in Spanish. I remember the first day that I went to the class. It was a bit difficult, because I didn't know anyone there, but Ms. Norma made the invitation. Ms. Norma, for me, I always feel a kind of academic support, especially through this program. For me, it was a wonderful academic support. Given that the majority of the students that come are volunteers, they don't receive anything. The most important thing is that the people that it is mentoring us, they are volunteers, they are not receiving anything. Something that is really impressive. And that is awesome. However, two of them, of two of these volunteers, they were the main ones. Given that one of them was a musician. He taught us the basses to start playing a little music. One of them, it was a music professor, and he started giving us classes. The other volunteer was an songwriter. And my passion in this world is to be a writer. However, nothing of this could be possible if it wasn't for Ms. Norma inviting me. I remember that my last year, it was pretty close to here at the school. However, my mother and Ms. Norma persuaded me to do it. But my mother and Ms. Norma asked me to continue in the school, I was ready to quit. Currently, I'm a student at AV Tech, and I really enjoy it, as you don't have an idea. And everything is just because of Manos program. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to invite Johnny to speak, and I have to say something. The program does very little. And... Everyone, I'm Ms. Norma.
I'm going to invite Jaime Valerio to share his testimony.
Ahora voy a invitar a Jaime Valerio para que comparta también su experiencia.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here.
Hola a todos, gracias por estar aquí.
Mi pequeño discurso va a ser en español. Espero que no le incomoda a nadie.
My speech is going to be in Spanish.
Recuerdo el primer día que asistí a clases.
I remember the first day that I went to the class.
Fue un poco difícil, ya que no conocía a nadie y Ms. Norma me hizo una invitación de asistir al programa de Manos.
It was a little bit complicated because I didn't know anyone there, but Ms. Norma made the invitation.
Ms. Norma, para mí siempre fue un apoyo académico, en especial a través de su programa.
For me, it was a wonderful academic support.
Puesto que en ese programa, la mayoría de las personas que nos visitan son voluntarios. No reciben absolutamente nada a cambio.
Most important thing is that the people that it is mentoring us, they are volunteers, they are not receiving anything.
Algo que es realmente impresionante.
And that is awesome.
Sin embargo, dos de ellos destacaron.
I must say that two of them, of two of these volunteers, they were the main ones.
Puesto que uno de ellos era un profesor de música. Él me enseñó las bases para empezar a tocar un poco de música.
One of them, it was a music professor and he started giving us classes.
El otro, el otro voluntario fue un escritor.
And the other volunteer, it was a writer.
Una de mis pasiones en este mundo es escribir.
And my passion in this world is to be a writer.
Sin embargo, nada de esto hubiera sido posible si no hubiera sido por Ms. Norma.
And nothing of this could be possible, it was not because Ms. Norma invited me.
Recuerdo que durante mi último año estuve bastante cerca de dejar la escuela.
I remember that my last year, it was pretty close to here at the school.
Sin embargo, mi madre y Ms. Norma me persuadieron de hacerlo.
But my mother and Ms. Norma asked me to continue in the school. I was ready to quit.
Actualmente soy estudiante AV Tech y realmente lo disfruto, como no tienen idea.
Actually, I am studying at AV Tech and I enjoy that, as you don't have an idea.
Y todo esto es gracias al programa de Manos.
And everything is just because Manos program.
Thank you.
Gracias.
I'm going to invite Johnny to speak and I have to say something. The program does very little. The heavy weight is on them and their resilience and their strength and the parents.
Quiero invitar ahora a Johnny que venga y este programa es muy especial por ellos.
Yes, I have something to do with the creativity.
Sí, yo tengo algo que ver con la creatividad.
And finding collaborators like beloved Asheville.
Y encontrar colaboradores como beloved Asheville.
That they come with amazing opportunities that they had to do with advocacy, self-confidence and artistic expressions for our youth.
Que ellos vienen a nosotros con impresionantes oportunidades para brindarles confianza en sí mismos, apoyo, creatividad.
So, Mr. Johnny.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening to everyone.
Mi nombre es Johnny Fraín Sánchez y es un privilegio estar aquí conviviendo con todos ustedes.
My name is Johnny Sánchez and it is a privilege to be here with you tonight.
Más que todo, porque en esta noche hablaré de uno de los mejores programas en el que he estado en una escuela.
Mainly because I have the opportunity to talk about one of the best programs that I have been part of during my school years.
La primera vez que escuché el nombre de Manos, yo no tenía ni la menor idea de qué significaba o de qué se trataba.
The first time that I hear about Manos program, I was not sure what it was about.
Y pues cuando logré entrar, la sorpresa no se hizo esperar. Pues observé el apoyo y la dedicación que tenían hacia los estudiantes.
And since the first day that I was in the program, I was surprised for all the dedication and all the support provided to the students.
Desde el momento que empecé a asistir al programa de Manos, empezó a llamarme más la atención y en realidad me estaba enamorando de ese programa.
And since the first moment that I got involved with the program, I fall in love with him.
Amiro el tiempo en que estudiantes universitarios vienen al programa de Manos para ayudarnos más que todo en trabajos de escuela.
College students come to us to help us and support us with our different homeworks and projects.
Pues la verdad, esa ayuda me ha servido mucho porque me han salvado de muchos trabajos en la escuela.
That support has been helping me a lot, has been saving my life for the projects such as school.
Y la verdad, estoy muy orgulloso de estar en ese programa porque la ayuda es grandiosa y nos ayudan más que todo en problemas, cómo resolver los desafíos que este país nos... Nos... Lo siento, creo que son los nervios. Nos presenta.
I am so proud to be part of this program, getting involved in it, but mainly this program helps us with the challenge that this country has for us.
Más que todo con el idioma y con trabajos que la escuela nos deja.
Mainly with the language barrier and the support for the assignments that we need to complete for the school.
Y algo también que me llamó la atención es que este programa ha estado funcionando por diez años y la verdad, yo como lo dije antes, estoy orgulloso y también estoy seguro que cada compañero que está presente en esta noche lo está de ser parte del programa de Manos.
This program has been working for ten years and I am so proud to be part of it. And I am sure that I am not the only one. All my other classmates that they are here, I am sure that they are so proud also.
Y sinceramente quiero agradecer porque este programa, a lo que ha llegado a ser ahora, es gracias a la maravillosa idea que Ms. Norma Brown tuvo en tener esa idea de poder apoyar a esos estudiantes, a esos niños que vienen de toda Hispanoamérica.
I am so grateful for the program but mainly because this idea that Ms. Norma Brown had about the program has been helping all the students that they come from Latin America.
El programa de Manos es donde todos participan con su esfuerzo. Más que todo gracias a los padres que confían a sus hijos y el esfuerzo de irlos a recoger a las ocho de la noche todos los martes.
Manos program is a collaboration with the parents because they trust us to be in this program and they make the effort to come every night to pick us up.
Y en verdad agradezco ese tiempo que ellos nos dedican a nosotros. Estoy agradecido y sé que soy privilegiado, privilegiado de estar siendo parte del programa de Manos.
I am so grateful for Manos program. It is a privilege to be part of Manos and I am so thankful for everything that has been done for me.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
And he has been here only... He's new this year. I met him in August, so I am expecting amazing things.
Algunas de las chicas que están aquí estamos esperando para que se lleve a cabo algo.
Now is the moment where I'm going to ask, please, all our collaborators, Pizga Legal Services, beloved Asheville, Warren Wilson College, de mujer a mujer... But now I don't know what I'm saying.
Y ahora voy a decirles a algunos de los colaboradores que están con nosotros y que nos han apoyado como los servicios legales de Pizga Legal, de mujer a mujer, beloved Asheville.
Children First Communities in Schools, Warren Wilson College, to please stand up.
Children's Feers, Warren Wilson College. Por favor, pónganse de pie para que les agradecamos.
Warren Wilson College, thank you. Pizga Legal Services, thank you. De mujer a mujer.
Gracias, la mujer a mujer.
De mujer a mujer, por favor.
Por favor.
They assist at food and workshops, thank you. Please stand up, thank you. Parents.
Los padres.
Padres, madres.
Las mamás.
Encargados o guardianes, por favor, pónganse de pie.
Los guardianes, por favor, pónganse de pie.
Ms. Meyer, one of my most wonderful partners in Jersey Dreams.
La señorita Meyer, una de mis colaboradoras más importantes.
And Poncho, Amy, also.
Y Poncho y Amy.
Our beloved people from beloved Asheville.
Nuestros queridas personas de beloved Asheville.
And Poncho. Mrs. Tovar from also Language Services, the ESL Program, sorry.
La señorita Tovar.
Please stand up, a friend of the community. Thank you, Mrs. De la Garza.
Gracias, señorita De la Garza.
Thank you so much.
Just take a moment.
Okay. Are you sure you don't want to get outside? It's okay. Okay, por favor. Mama, alumnos, the persons that spoke today, if they can stand here just for a picture, please.
Sí, por favor, las personas que hablaron.
Que vengan abajo.
Personas que hablaron, la señora y los dos estudiantes si pueden venir al frente para tomar unas fotos. Y todos los estudiantes de Manos, que por favor se paren.
All the collaborators, fathers, mothers, students, follow me because we are going to have some coffee and something to eat. Please follow me now.
Por favor, si se esperan, por favor, todos.
My daughter has a degree in Spanish.
Por... Sí.
I mean, she has a degree.
Por favor, si se quedan los papás tantito, no salgan, espérenos un momento.
Can everyone wait here for just one quick second? Ms. McMahon would like your attention, again, just for one quick second.
Por favor, si se quedan, buscamos la atención de ustedes por solamente un minuto.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Lo siento.
Okay, let's be quiet.
Soy voluntaria a Manos porque estudio español y quiero aprender más.
I am a Manos volunteer because I am studying Spanish and I want to learn more.
And now I'll switch into English because I don't speak much.
Un poquito español. Y ahora voy a cambiar al inglés porque solamente hablo un poquito de español.
See. So I just wanted to be able to say to the other board members from a personal experience how very powerful and wonderful this program is. I don't get to go every Tuesday night because we have lots of arts things on Tuesday nights. We have lots of things at Reynolds High School on Tuesday nights and Reynolds Middle School on Tuesday nights, so I miss them sometimes. But I go when I can and I really go as a gift to myself to be able to help build my Spanish and listen and wash a few dishes and do what I can. And as we've heard already, my personal experience of this is that it really is a place to build community and welcome. And I'm talking too much, sorry.
Ahora le quiero decir al board un poquito de mi experiencia personal de lo maravilloso que es ir a Manos. Generalmente no voy todos los martes porque en los martes hay muchas actividades, pero sí voy algunos de esos martes. Y estoy tratando de hacer un resumen de todo lo que dijo.
And just finally, if there are board members who would like to visit, but you feel a little nervous about it, I'd be happy to go with you.
Quería invitar al resto de los miembros de la junta directiva para si quieren ir uno de los martes, sería maravilloso que asistieran. Sí, gracias.
I was going to be recalled, but now everybody will be afraid to go, but I will be calling them all the time.
Yo quería invitarlos a todos a que fueran, pero me daba miedo que se fueran a sentir obligados a ir.
Gracias, thank you guys.
As the students are leaving, I would also just like to say one more thing. For the principals in the room, Norma mentioned that there is a training available for staff of schools and if you're interested in learning more about how to support your Latino students, please talk to Norma. So far, only, I believe, two students have taken advantage of that training, but it's a very generous offer and so you might want to consider it for your school.
This is indeed a wonderful program and we do appreciate what Norma has done to this community and for us. I believe the next item on the agenda is good news.
Time for good news, everyone. Switching gears now. If I could have Ms. Doris Sellers, a principal at Reynolds High School, come on down and Ms. Laura Mitchell, she is our BCS Arts Specialist. We're here tonight to recognize Shawn Smith. He's the Reynolds Band Director. He's been recognized as one of the top band directors in the country. And Mr. Smith, if you could just stand awkwardly right there, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
As you do everything, Shawn.
I'm so thrilled to be here. Thank you, board, and Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, to recognize our band director from A.C. Reynolds High School, Mr. Shawn Smith. I often tell my band directors that they work harder than anybody I know. They give up their weekends, they basically give up their lives to their profession. And Mr. Smith feels very passionately about his job and he loves his students and he really gives everything he has. And I'm so glad that he has been awarded with many things because he deserves it. And I just want to personally say thank you for all that you do and how you have... You really are excellent at your teaching and an excellent musician, excellent person and it's a privilege to work with you. So just a few things about Mr. Smith and his program. And I'm just going to say a few things because Ms. Sellers is a huge supporter of the arts and she, I know, will do an excellent job as she is always at all the events. And I actually got to sit next to her as we got to hear Mr. Smith and his band play in Winston-Salem. Only three of the top high school bands in North Carolina got chosen and they performed at the North Carolina Music Educators Convention. Fabulous performance and we're very proud of you for that. Also, Mr. Smith was a finalist for the Music and Arts Music Educator of the Year and one of the top 10 music educators in the United States. So that is amazing. And also, the A.C. Reynolds Band was awarded the Mark of Excellence, which is a national award. Hundreds of bands across the United States sent in recordings and the top ensembles received the Mark of Excellence. So, A.C. Reynolds Band, I see some of you out there in the audience. I see parents and bands cannot happen without parents' support. Y'all are amazing, so thank you for supporting Mr. Smith and your students and their endeavors. And Ms. McMahon, I know you're huge supporters of the arts for the Reynolds District as well. And then lastly, tomorrow they're supposed to go to all district, which we're hoping the weather is going to cooperate and they get to go. But Reynolds plays 38 students, which is the most of any school in the district, about 13 students. So huge, huge, amazing band. I was there last week and just really moved listening to you play. So I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Sellers and I just want to say thank you for all that you do. Music is a universal language and it's a beautiful way to make the world a better place, to collaborate, all the things that we just heard about, collaboration and working together and understanding each other. And you're doing that every day for our students and we're grateful, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair Franklin, members of the board and our guests. I still remember very vividly that day in June when I spent the day interviewing for potential band directors. And once I met Shawn Smith, I thought I was done. I did not need to speak with anyone else. I did not need to speak with anyone else. But out of courtesy, I finished the other interviews. But I'm thinking all day, that is Mr. Smith. And how have I not met this man before now? Because after I checked references, he was like a hero in this community. And I knew it was just the perfect person for our band program. And the last eight years have certainly convinced me that that was true. Examples of Mr. Smith's expertise include a lot of what you've already heard Ms. Mitchell mention, but we consistently have large numbers of students selected to all county, all district, and all state honors bands. We have performed in eight years, two audition-only performances to the North Carolina State Music Educators Conference, and an overwhelming number of awards for our band at marching band competitions and music performance adjudications. One of these days, we're going to have to get even more shelves, and I'm always afraid those shelves are going to fall on my head when I'm up there because they're so full of things. But you assure me that your parents have done a good job securing those. So professionally, Mr. Smith is asked to be a guest clinician, an adjudicator at state and national events. He is a mentor to new band directors in our district and across the state. Each year, and I think this is important because Mr. Smith hosts a student-teacher in an effort to continue to develop educators for our future generations, and I think that's very important. They also give you some extra help. You work them really, really good, for free. You know, that's really good. So Mr. Smith works throughout the Reynolds District to develop young musicians. I mean, and I see some of our principals here tonight. They know, he takes the tour, and they go perform all throughout our elementary schools, and that's always really fun. His expertise in the classroom is evident when you hear his students perform. One thing I always say, I'll go to all honors band across the state, and I'll hear this song I just love. And I will text Mr. Smith, "We need to order that music. We don't need an all-state honors band. We can do that right here at Reynolds for our own concert." And that is truly how I feel about you and your band students, that we can do anything we want to do. And you always just make it happen. Last month, you heard one of his brass ensembles perform, and both Mr. Smith and I were unable to be here last month, so that's why we're doing this tonight. We are honoring him tonight for some very important achievements this past year. The ones that you've heard Ms. Mitchell mention. Our symphonic band did send in an audition. They were selected for this Mark of Excellence from the Foundation of Music Education. And I will say, when we were looking at that list, every band, Texas, Texas, North Carolina. And we were the only ones from North Carolina selected for that award. Mr. Smith is in the final 10 music educators in the nation, and that's a big deal. Would you consider this is not just North Carolina, but our entire nation? We're very proud of that. And most recently, he has been nominated for the Marvin R. Pittman North Carolina Champions of Education Award. So while these are all excellent and very well-deserved accomplishments, I applaud Mr. Smith the most for the teacher he is in the classroom, the mentor he is to young musicians. And he's been a mentor to Ms. McMahon's two students, who Caleb just performed the other weekend in New York City and came out of your program. He is also a husband, father, and son to his family, and they're all sick tonight. We're hoping you don't get it because you're going to be with kids all weekend in Western Carolina. But he has been holding off, but they could not be with him tonight. But they're an integral part of his band program. You will always see his family and his parents at our concerts. But as you can see tonight by the presence of his students and parents, and with the weather, we had a whole lot more, but we are so proud of you all. You all surprised him tonight, and his students and parents are with him as well, and that means a lot because to me, that is what it really boils down to, is we can have recognitions and awards, but it's what he is in that classroom. And kids, you all will appreciate a skill Mr. Smith has that I've always been very envious of, and you all know exactly what I'm talking about. But my husband and I are with 104 teenagers in New Orleans. And, you know, you get off the bus, you let them out, and they're just, they're typical tourists. I mean, my goodness. And you're thinking, 104 teenagers in New Orleans. And he'd already given them the talk about, you know, you're not in Asheville, be careful. And they're scattering. Mr. Smith, will you do that, the famous? That's all it takes. And 104 teenagers look like ants. They all turn immediately with one snap, and they're in one small huddle on the side of the street. And they're listening. And it is that way everywhere we go because we never worry about taking our band kids because it is what he has established with that one small snap that makes our kids just be respectful young people that I am always so proud of, not only for your skill, your talent, but also for who you are and how you represent Reynolds High School. So tonight, it is with great honor that I present Mr. Smith, Director of Bands at A.C. Reynolds High School. And I always think what a fine representation you are for Buncombe County Schools' arts programs.
A little something in addition before we get on to the pictures.
Can I say something?
No, uh-uh. I get to...
It's hot, but not too long.
Can I say something first, please? Thank you. I just wanted to add, you bragged on my kids a little bit, but that snap, Katie, my daughter, has that snap because she was drum major for two years. And the amount of leadership that kids learn in band and collaboration, as we've said. And yes, my son, just last week, got to play at Lincoln Center, jazz at Lincoln Center. It is life-changing, not only while your kids are in the band program, but forever after. And this is the first year my daughter has not been in marching band since the eighth grade, which means she's not playing for the basketball games at UNC Chapel Hill. And I don't know if anybody else has noticed how that team is doing this year, but I think it might because Katie's not in the band. So just saying, big impacts. Thank you very much.
Boo hits.
I just wanted to say real quick, they all surprised me by showing up this evening. And you can't... It means so much for me to have you here, sharing this with me. And I have to thank, I have to thank Mrs. Sellers for trusting me many, many, feels like many, many years ago, but it's only eight now, and believing in me and the program. She is so supportive of every program at Reynolds High School, but always comes and brags on the kids. She'll show up to the concert, she'll come to all district concert on Saturday. She comes to all state. And has just been a huge supporter of me and my career. And you can't flourish like that without that kind of mentorship. And I have to thank my, of course, my family. My mom and dad. My dad was a principal in Henderson County for a long time. My mom, a teacher there too. And they're both in the Education Hall of Fame in Henderson County. My dad was pretty upset with me, I'll be honest with you, when I was going to apply for a job in Buncombe. He's 80... Yes, yeah. My dad, I spoke to him on the way over here, and he told me how proud he was and how much he missed being here. But he said, "Son, it was the best thing you've done in your career." And I have to, I have to thank you for that. You made that happen for me. But I have to thank you guys because none of these awards are done without students in front of me. I don't make a sound, ever. And I love you guys from the bottom of my heart, really do. And thank you all. Thank you, Board, for making band programs something that happens every single day in a kid's life. Music is something that changes kids for the better, for the better. And it doesn't happen that way in all counties, just down the road, just down the road. Kids not being able to play their instrument every single day, and that's a shame. So anyway, thank you so much. I'll stop.
And students, get ready. You guys will be in the next picture.
February.
You good? All right, students, you're up. Nope, you can stay, stay.
Everybody take a big step back so we can get everybody in line here.
So everyone, hold real still. There's a few cameras in action right now. And students, you guys can go ahead, pack up and head home. Thank you for being here. And as the students are filing out, I would like Dr. Sheri Boone and Ms. Darcy Grimes with NCAT to come on forward. They're going to tell us more about the inaugural NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. And since Mr. Smith had to stand here awkwardly... Ms. Snyder, if you could go stand here awkwardly as well.
Totally fair. All right, this is a very special honor that we get to present with, along with NCAT. This is the first for Buncombe County Schools, the first for NCAT. And this is the Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. And Ms. Ally Snyder is a second-year beginning teacher at Weaverville Elementary School. And I want to be her mom, her second mom. She is just beyond special. When I read her resume or her education philosophy, I thought, wow, she is seasoned beyond her years. And I can't tell you where her career is going to go. Just in her second year, she has a full career ahead of her. And we are very blessed and touched that she gets to touch the lives of Weaverville Elementary students and Buncombe County schools. And so I think, Madam Chair, this may melt your heart because she is representing North Buncombe. And as a former mentor, right, way to go.
Exactly.
All right. We want to share with you the inspiration behind this award from NCAT. So who better yet than Darcy Grimes from NCAT to share this information?
Thank you so much. And I want to be a student in your classroom. You can be her second mom. I want to be a student. But a little bit about the history behind this Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. It was really developed to honor beginning teachers and to retain teachers who show promise and excellent teaching and education leaders in North Carolina. NCAT is all about retaining excellent teachers and really giving them the tools and the skills that they need to go back into the classroom. And we wanted to do that for beginning teachers from across the state. This was our first year with this award, and it was amazing, the applicants that came in. I had an opportunity afterwards to read through the portfolios and some of the resumes, and it's just, it's incredible, the teachers we have in the state. Each district and each charter nominated one teacher, Beginning Teacher of the Year, for this award. And then it was narrowed down. We had a whole committee that looked through all of the portfolios, and it was narrowed down to three finalists for each region. And Ms. Ally Snyder is one of the finalists, one of the three finalists, for the western region of North Carolina, which is incredible. I have already learned so much from her. In December, the 28 finalists from all the way across the state came to NCAT for a week-long professional development, which consisted of a mix of beginning teacher, but also teacher leadership. Because, just as Dr. Boone said, it's incredible learning from these beginning teachers because you would never guess they were beginning teachers. By far, you would guess it was five years in the classroom, 10 years in the classroom. They already have that leadership skills. So we wanted it to be a mix of both beginning teacher, but then also that teacher leadership. I had the great opportunity of spending the week and getting to know all of the great teachers, including Ally. And we had an activity during the week that we called a peek into the classroom, where all of the teachers had an opportunity to really tell their stories and their students' stories, showing pictures and videos. And I 100% want to come into your classroom. I know we've already said that. I have learned so much, and I just want to be a student in that classroom. So before you leave, I want to put that on the calendar to be able to come. But I'm just so honored to be able to be here tonight, to be able to help recognize Ally. As everyone knows, you guys are very lucky to have her. She is amazing and making a huge difference in the students' lives in her classroom.
And so at this time, I want to say on behalf of Weaverville Elementary, Buncombe County Schools, and NCAT, we are so proud of you and all the accomplishments that you've earned so far and all that you will as a true teacher leader. So we thank you and we applaud you for all that you do each and every day. Thank you, Ally.
Head to the middle for our photo. And Ms. Allison, you can join them. Dr. Boone, you're up too. Ms. Snyder, if your family wants to come on down. And for our final good news recognition this evening, we'd like to have Ms. Debbie Bryant come on down. She's going to help us recognize our North Carolina Physical Education Teacher of the Year, Renee Glass. And Renee, Ms. Glass, come on down. I'll have you stand right here.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, and Board members and audience. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to be able to recognize Renee. I'd like to ask everybody, what skills do you remember learning in your high school physical education class? Would it be dodging those balls that are coming at you at 90 miles an hour? Would it be going over to the corner of the gym and looking at that rope, thinking, "How am I ever going to get up there? They want me to do what, climb that rope?" Well, lucky, lucky, lucky for us today, physical education has changed. And it's no more evident in Nesbit Discovery Academy, where Ms. Renee Glass serves as their physical education instructor. While in her class, students have the opportunity to work on skills that will stay with them for their entire life. Skills like learning how to assess their personal health, how to set goals, how to overcome behavioral issues and barriers, how to stay active and eat healthy for the rest of their life. Students are not only engaged in their learning, but they are growing physically, mentally, and in their cognitive domains. So when, while walking into our classroom, it's not uncommon to see students participating in many different activities. You might one day go in and they're doing disc golf, another day spike ball, pickleball, bowling, high-intensity fitness training, cardio drumming, pickleball or cycling, even sometimes geocaching. So students wear their heart rate monitors when they're in, during their class, and this helps to guide them in assessing their effort and their intensity levels. They then receive a personalized digital report that allows them to self-manage their progress. So as you can see, physical education has definitely changed over the years. And a big reason behind that is because of teachers like Ms. Glass. She has a deep passion and determination for her students to produce positive health and wellness outcomes. Students are able to create a healthy relationship with physical activity that can last for the remainder of their lives. For these and many more reasons, Ms. Glass was recently awarded the title of North Carolina Secondary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize her. So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize her and to present to you Ms. Renee Glass, the 2019-20 North Carolina High School Physical Education Teacher of the Year.
And we'll have you guys go to the middle for your photo. All right. Board members, Mr. Bryant, if you could, hold on one. Go ahead and head on up there. And Ms. Pate, come on up. Ms. Brookshire, do you want to get in on photo? Okay.
Y'all drive safely. At this time, we're ready for the superintendent's comments.
Okay. Where did the crowd go? Where'd everybody go?
I didn't want to hear you.
Sometimes I don't want to hear myself. I want to begin by recognizing that this week is National School Counselor Week. And it's interesting that last week, we recognized several of our social workers and counselors for a number of awards from their professional organizations. But I want to say hats off to all of our staff, all of our counselors and social workers across the district, because they have such a crucial job, such a crucial responsibility in terms of supporting our students. So National School Counselor Week, still have time to give them a pat on the back. We are excited about the opening of our newest preschool and teaching classroom at North Buncombe High School. The ribbon cutting is scheduled, and the entire board is invited for this ribbon cutting. It will be Wednesday, February 12 at noon. And many thanks to our county commissioners. They provided $400,000 worth of grant funds that were part of their early childhood initiatives. So we're really excited about this program. Mr. Wyatt, I know he's excited because he's put a lot of time and effort in there. And Dr. Cersei, I know it's going to be wonderful for your whole school community. So looking forward to that ribbon cutting ceremony. For more on our February calendar, I want to note the following upcoming events. The ROTC Ball is scheduled on Saturday, February 15. It will be at the WNC Ag Center, and that's always well-attended program. And it is very highly organized, but it's organized by the student cadets themselves. So if you've not had an opportunity to come to that program, it is really worth the time. Wonderful program. Later on in the month, the All County Elementary and Middle Schools Chorus Concert, that will take place. It'll be Tuesday, February 25. And that will be, Ms. Swanner, I think, at Brookstone Church, if I'm not mistaken. We will be co-hosting with Henderson County Schools, a Leader in Me Regional Conference. That's actually a national conference that'll be held on Thursday, February 27, and Friday, February 28. It will be at the downtown Crown Plaza. And we will have several of our individual schools, and I think several of those principals host Leader in Me programs in your schools. And they will also be hosting site tours for a number of the participants there. So really proud to be able to host that conference. And that is from the Covey Institute, by the way, is the primary sponsor. In closing, I want to recognize two of our central office departments and their staff that have recently been recognized by their professional organizations. And first, Ms. Frisby, our finance department. They received two Certificates of Excellence. And I think those certificates, if we really looked closely, a lot of it's for transparency and certainly the accurate data that's provided to our public. So congratulations for those two awards. And that was from the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO, and the Finance Officers Association as well. So two wonderful awards for a wonderful department here in that central office. And likewise, our communications department, which we fondly call the Little Engine That Could, recently was awarded four Blue Ribbon Awards by the North Carolina School Publics' Relation Association. Three for video productions. We had student volunteers at the Astral Humane Society. The 2020 District Teachers of the Year, I think most all of us saw that video. And the Full Lockdown Drill. And, Board, I don't think you've seen that as of yet, but anticipate that'll be part of our work session for Safe Schools. It's just an incredible production. And then a fourth was cited for photography, 12 years of the STS Black Light Show. Okay. Again, just proud of both of these departments. And we're so fortunate in Buncombe County. And I've said this before, certainly from the transparency, and I think we've led this part of the state in terms of that. And with this communications department, you have just brought us light years in such a short period of time. So thank you both for all that you do and your entire staff. So thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. It's a shame those people missed them. Next is the Action Agenda. The first item on the agenda is the 1920 Budget Amendment Number Three. Mr. Frisby. Ms. Frisby, are there questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, Fairview Elementary School Renovations Project Phase Two Design and Budgeting Contracts. Are there questions from the board for Mr. Fairley?
Jeff Fairley's not here tonight.
I started saying it'd be real hard to ask him. He's not here.
We can answer questions.
Clark can talk about it.
Oh. Mr. Wyatt can answer Mr. Fairley's questions. Do we have questions for Mr. Wyatt?
I have one.
Yes?
And it's probably just me. I don't understand what it means to... Terms have been negotiated to bring the design to 50% construction documents for Phase Two additions and renovations. What exactly does that...
So 50% construction documents would mean that you... Obviously, 100% documents would be documents that you consent to...
Not to bid. To...
So it's not the drawings?
It is the drawings. You get, you know, half the drawings done, basically. That's a loose term when it says 50%, but the drawings are there, but not all the details and the specs and the types of equipment are worked out. So it's the process to get it moving so you can get accurate pricing for, when we come back, to move forward with the true... Understand the true need for the building.
And are we going to spend more money by doing it half now and half later? Or does that not even factor into it?
Common way of doing it.
Okay. The term, maybe it's been there before, but I don't remember it, and I didn't understand exactly what it meant.
Other times you see 50%, 75%, and then 100%. So that's a pretty common way of doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Especially when it's funded over different periods.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wyatt?
I have a question, but I'm not sure Mr. Wyatt is the one who would answer it. It has to do with the capacity studies and the numbers of students. So I don't know who to... So y'all can figure it out. So this says, "Phase One of the Fairview Elementary School Renovations Project is well underway. With a completion date in summer 2020, the project will add five K-1 classrooms in the former Intensive Intervention Wing. The most recent updates to capacity studies indicate that this will not be sufficient to accommodate the full implementation of the unfunded mandated K-3 class size reduction." So are these updates that we're getting from the state? Is this because we've got a whole lot more kindergarteners this year than we expected? Why is it that we have more kids at Fairview than we even thought we would when we knew we were growing fast?
It all depends on the growth and who's coming in. And remember, the ADM law, that K-3 mandate goes into full capacity in two years.
Yes. But we knew that when we started out with this. So it seems like we have unexpected now numbers of more kids than we anticipated.
We're watching the trend line, and it is growing more rapidly than we thought before. But then we also had a year that we didn't grow quite as much. So it has been a little bit uncertain.
Okay.
And we are working within the confines of that wing. Remember, we moved the Intensive Intervention students to Hall Creek. So we only have so much space within that wing. We have one other classroom that... It was a large classroom, and we have subdivided that one. So we're doing a couple of different strategies to meet all possible growth options.
And then, but the proposed Phase Two construction on these plans is adding on new space, right, Clark, rather than just renovating space that's on there?
Correct.
So that's a couple more classrooms for Phase Two?
Yeah. It's at the back of the building and then on the wing across from the I-Wing.
So Fairview is growing faster than we even anticipated that it would, and we're having to adapt. With these unfunded mandates in place, we're having to scramble to make it work.
I might add, Mr. Fairley, from his sick bed, sent me this email, because I think it references exactly what we've discussed. Based on the numbers, it appears that we will need more classrooms, plus they have many classrooms that are currently undersized. This will be exaggerated when we put more fourth graders in the classrooms due to the K-3 class size reduction. So this really does tie back in to the K-3 class size reduction.
And there are just so many ripple effects of the K-3, the unfunded...
Very much so.
Let me just say that again, the unfunded K-3 mandate. There's the capital issues that we have, then there's going to be the more people that we're going to need to teach these smaller classes. It's a lot.
We are concerned about the size of the classrooms, especially for the fourth graders. And knowing that that number most likely will continue to grow, it is of concern.
So it's rippling to the upper grades, this K-3 mandate?
Exactly. And you're going to see it at other schools, such as STS, we're going to be talking about. We continue to watch Glen Arden, Avery's Creek. So we're watching them pretty closely.
And I'd remind the board that this same issue would have been expanded across the district had we actually put with the intermediate schools that addressed some of this issue that came facility-wise with the K-3 class size. And Reynolds is the one of the two districts that does not have the intermediate.
Other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this proposal.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is the North Carolina School Boards Association 2020 Legislative Committee. And this is a representative that's chosen from our board to represent us on this committee. And Ms. Churchill represents us on that state board. And I would ask her to speak to this item, please.
So the North Carolina School Board Association's Board of Directors has invited each local school board to nominate one of its members to serve on NCSBA's Legislative Committee. This is a committee tasked with developing a draft legislative agenda for NCSBA for consideration and adoption by the Delegate Assembly, to answer a lot of these unfunded mandate concerns, by the way. The committee also reviews ongoing legislative activity and provides guidance to the Board of Directors on legislative matters. It is comprised of a subset of the NCSBA Board of Directors, the eight education district presidents, and eight at-large local school board members nominated by their local board and selected by the NCSBA president. This at-large nomination and selection process provides an opportunity for the larger membership to become more directly involved in NCSBA's decision-making process. And with that being said, it would be my honor to nominate Max Queen to be selected for this position.
Do we need a second on that nomination? Or is this...
That would be in order. Yes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Do you want to speak, Mr. Queen?
I would gladly accept that nomination.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So in that regard, I have a motion and a second. I would entertain a vote to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Queen. That means you get to drive to Raleigh a time or two.
And Pat, you've done it for how many years?
I'm on a different committee.
Oh, this is a different thing.
I'm on a different group than this committee.
I thought this was the same thing.
It's a different...
Okay. What are you on?
I don't remember the name of it, but it has to do. It's involved with...
Do you remember what they serve for lunch?
Promoting issues and advocacy with the legislature on issues that come up, et cetera.
But that's somehow... I'm way confused. That's different than what we're talking about here?
It's all right, Ms...
It has to do with lobbying.
This has more to do with the lobbying and the convention, or the actual agenda and things related to that to put back to the group at our meeting.
The legislative as opposed to the advocacy. You're on the advocacy, and this is the legislative?
Okay. Now that we've gotten that cleared up, the next item is...
I think what we're hearing here is that Buncombe County is going to have a whole lot of representation at the state, which is exactly what I wanted.
We are well represented. Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item is Owen High School Use for Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment. And are there questions from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? INCA High School Use of Capital Outlay Athletic Allotments, questions from the board?
That would be INCA Middle School.
Oh. What says "high" on here? Okay, so it's middle. Any questions from the board?
I had one, maybe for Mr. Ball. It was difficult, and I'm sure it wasn't in another setting, but it was difficult to read the quote for the one that got selected. And I always worry with the... There's so much verbiage. Are we comparing apples to apples? Because there was something that came back from Mr. Fairley to make sure that there was a certain type of fencing that was going to be a part of that, and that has been done? Good. Because there was something about, if we didn't do that, it was less likely to last or something. I don't know what all the details were, but I just want to make sure, because I couldn't really read in the way it got laid out for us here.
It was double knuckles on the fence, which makes the round top and bottom to avoid injuries.
First job I ever had, Max, in high school, was working for a chain-link fence company.
You know double knuckles?
I do. It's a long time ago, but I do remember.
Yeah, we have INCA representatives here.
Good. They've given me the thumbs up. I'm good. I just... There was some questions in the email thread, and I couldn't tell... I want to make sure they'd been answered. So good.
Okay. Other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. INCA guys, you got to wait for the entire meeting to get your item done. All right. Items on Consent Agenda, the minutes of January 16, 2020, the personnel report, advisory council members remove/replace a member, state report, student support personnel, and policies for second reading, policy 4334, 5035, 7345, use of unnamed aircraft... Oh, drones. I thought we were going to put that in INCA jet in the air there. And policy 5210, distribution and display of non-school materials. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will declare this meeting adjourned without objection. Y'all can go home now.